We are good to start this meeting on May 16th at 4:00 PM. Turn my microphone on. And so we'll open our regular business meeting and please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up on our agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda. And I have a couple of amendments. The first is, these are going to be two discussion items. The first is a letter of opposition for some proposed OSHA rules that will have an impact on our, our fire volunteers and our SAR volunteers. And I know, is it Lieutenant Lancaster?
Chief Lancaster.
Chief Lancaster, I'm sorry. Chief Lancaster is here to speak about that. So I'd like to put that as a discussion item one.
Oh, under public hearing?
No, no, yes, under public hearing. So we'll do the public hearing, then we'll go to discussion item one will be that letter of opposition.
OSHA opposition?
Yeah. And then the second discussion item that I wanted to include is a, it's a higher, for the fair manager position.
Higher order?
Higher order for the fair manager position.
That would be B. So discussion item A.
And B.
Okay, so B and then B is the higher order?
Yes. And I'm adding, I'm adding that one because we, as you know, we had a fair, we had a fair board meeting on Tuesday night where some decisions were made, which has moved this forward. So we weren't able to get that on the agenda as a result of not knowing what the fair board meeting would reveal. And it's time sensitive because as you know, the fair's coming up, so.
Yep.
Those are the two things I had. Do you have anything, Jay?
No, I'll bring mine up, actually for discussion item, yeah, please. I guess it would be appropriate, C.
Okay.
And it's discussion of regional solutions, Southern District Committee.
Yeah, I got an email about that.
Me too.
And.
I think it's worth discussing.
And I forwarded it to Revia and said Jay needs to apply for this.
Yeah, well, I got one from Gina that said the same thing.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's good to discuss that. So what are we calling that again?
Regional.
Regional Solutions.
Department. I move that JB.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? John, did you have anything to add?
Nope, nope, nope.
All right. Those are the amendments. Entertained a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. Now we'll move into general public comments and, let's see. Lynn Coker, you had the first public comment for him, Lynn.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this afternoon. With the board, BOC authorization of a half a million dollar payment to our clerk today, it's obvious the disastrous computer attack still haunts us. After reviewing over three years of county videos and documents related to the BOC meetings, I discovered it's a recorded fact. Our county leaders refer formally forewarned in January 21st that serious attacks on our cyber system occurred regularly and we were at imminent risk of more. This warning came from Kuzkury Electric, who I believe were our cyber systems management and/or vendor at the time. Each of our BOC members at that time indicated that this was a very serious situation and something must be done. Yet in April of '23, our cyber systems were crashed in a massive attack. Being forewarned, how could this possibly happen? Until our current BOC leadership delivers us a full public disclosure of the incident report surrounding this massive hack, we can only guess. But here's what I know. I know that whatever steps were taken by our senior most leadership from '21 through '22, the worth and effectiveness of those steps must be measured by acknowledged standards of care senior most leaders are expected to follow regarding cyber systems investment, security, and operations. In that light, what follows are just four examples of leadership emissions during the '21-'22 period, which still hurt us today. Number one, did BOC senior most leadership engage with department heads to restrict access to our cyber systems and enhance backup? There was no action reported. Did senior leadership push for cybersecurity audits? Never any action reported. Did senior leadership ask department heads to ensure vendors do no harm to our cyber systems? Never any action reported. Did senior leadership conduct periodic reviews of cybersecurity matters? No action reported. To advance transparency and voter accountability, which we all love, it's essential that the current BOC make public the incident reporting which documents the cyber situation building up to and through the 2023 hack. This includes the total cost of restoring our systems plus the cost for new infrastructure. Further, our current BOC is encouraged from my heart to hold a public forum to review this incident report that you're going to create or have created already, itemizing the going forward county investments that we've made since April '23, which are intended to help us survive the many attacks that are coming our way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. And next up is Reece Klein.
Thank you for letting me speak. So I now understand, which I didn't understand until just right before the meeting, that you guys hold levy meetings regarding the law enforcement levy. And that's separate from this meeting. I will start, and I also understand they are, they are public, so I will start attending those and stop pestering you in these meetings about this issue. But in light of the fact that I didn't know that, I'll go ahead and read an email that I sent to the board and to Sheriff Ward on Monday night. And I haven't heard anything back on that, but had I known, I would have, I would have attended the meeting and it probably would have been discussed at the meeting today. So with that said, I'll read the email. It says, "To the Board of Commissioners and Sheriff Ward, at the May 8 Town Hall, it was very disappointing to learn that there was no official written document detailing the levy, how the levy funds were to be used, how the review board was to perform their function, what metrics would be used to determine success, et cetera. Transparency is a fundamental pillar of trust for all levels of government, especially local government. The community has been asking for details regarding what the BOC is classifying as an emergency situation. Notes on a pad of paper do not evoke confidence or trust, rather that the levy amount was just penciled out and execution an afterthought. There is still time to work toward building that trust and confidence in our Board of Commissioners and the sheriff. Regardless of whether this levy passes or fails, future attempts to gain voter support for a revised levy will have greater success if a well-crafted, data-driven document is produced for voters so they can see what they will get, how success will be measured, and whether they can expect the levy to go away when it expires. In that light, I have crafted a high-level outline and sent it to Walt Keys for his input. Walt's time at the podium on the, on the 8th, which was your last town hall, was well noticed by those in the room and the people who either watched the meeting live or the recording on YouTube. He had valuable input into the document. We are sending it to you for consideration and implementation on some level. The voters deserve this level of information and accountability." And so there was attached a five-page outline with some content in it, but most of it was just to try and act as a template or guide to give you guys some kind of, you know, roadmap breadcrumbs for creating a document that, that we would consider something we would love to see as the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reece. And the third and final one is Jim Cohen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Jim Cohen. I really just came today because I wanted to thank the three of you and anybody else that you had to help you with all the information you're putting out in regards to the levy. I mean, it takes, it takes courage to put out a levy when, you know, so many people are against taxes these days. But, but you did, and, and I've been around the county for a long time and I've seen the need for some sort of levy buildup ever since I first started at the county in 1983. The fact of the matter is, I mean, you have a lot of people out there telling you you need to live within your means. Well, the means aren't the means that the county has today. The county has always survived on forest receipts until those pretty much truncated, stopped about 1990. Or were severely diminished. And in the years since, well, the county for its whole history has never put up a levy that would fund the county services, the kind of county services that the citizens want. And I believe the citizens do want them. So, I mean, you're stuck, you're, you're in this tough situation. I think you're doing a good job getting the information out. You're, I mean, you're trying to reach with the people at your, at your forums. And I mean, it's hard to get everybody to come to them or really get everybody to pay attention. But it seems to me like the public is engaged and Ms. Klein certainly is engaged. If the, if the levy passes, maybe she would consent to serve on the seven-member board that is going to oversee how the money is spent. So good luck with it. And again, thank you for your leadership in this.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, no further public comment requests, so we'll move forward in the agenda to the consent agenda.
Approval?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing. And this public hearing is in reference to annexation into a special district. And first I will open the public hearing at 4:13 hours. And I will now accept any public comment now that the hearing is open. Is there any public comment regarding the annexation?
Well, we're the ones involved as trying to be annexed.
Come on up.
Step up to the podium, sir. Please state your name and.
Billy Smith and my wife, Rhea. And the way it started was us applying for a building, building permit. And that required some sort of fire protective.
Fire district.
Maybe, maybe like a thousand gallon drum on your property or being in a fire district. Well, we are two doors down or upstream on Hunter Creek from the last house that's in the city limits, so.
City limits?
The city limits, yes. And so we're not in the city limits and we're, we're not in a fire district. And so, but, but you know, in order for me to buy the house, I, I had to find out if the fire department in Gold Beach would come out and, and help us put it out if we had them. Well, the fire chief at that time said, sure, as long as there's not another house in Gold Beach proper. In that case, you'll be second on the list. So anyway, you know, our property is only 80 feet wide and this huge drum, and it's not very, much larger in the other direction. So that was kind of impractical. And so we've been knocking on doors and see if we could be annexed into Gold Beach Fire District. That didn't work out, but now we're petitioning the chief, and he signed off, of, of the Wetterburn Fire District to let us in. We'll be glad to support your firefighting endeavors with money. And so, so we're, we're all in on it.
Great.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment regarding this proposed annexation? If there is no further public comment, then I will, I will close the hearing at 4:15 hours. And discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll move to, do we have a?
There is an ARS in the packet, I think.
Move to approve the petition for annexation on P. 7861 Hunter Creek Road, Gold Beach and the Gold Beach Wetterburn Protection District.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
Nice problem solving.
And then what is the next, that has got to come up here?
Yeah, go, come, come on back up.
Next steps? Is there so many days?
So what, what can we expect in the near future of how this will work out?
You'll see the Wetterburn Fire District on your tax bill.
So are we, can we now tell the building department that we are in the?
Let me check with building and planning.
Why don't we check with Revia?
So one.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the, the order for annexation needs to be approved by the Department of Revenue. And once we get final approval from them that the map is okay and everything else looks good, then you'll be final.
Okay, okay.
But you, you are approved, though.
Can I ask one question, Chair?
Sure.
So, and Gold Beach, what was it, was there a reasoning why they, because you're so much closer to Gold Beach and Wetterburn?
Well, I think the young lady could explain it better than me.
Okay.
Go ahead, Revia.
So, the city of Gold Beach actually provides firefighting services for the Gold Beach Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a natural in their situation.
Okay, all right, that answers the question, thanks.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
You bet, thank you.
All right. Next up are our discussion action items. So first up is Chief, this is regarding the letter of opposition for OSHA rules. And so I spoke to some of our fire leadership in our county several months ago. And there were some concerns regarding some changes that OSHA was going to make and the impacts that those changes would have on our volunteer firefighters as well as our search and rescue volunteers and anyone volunteering in that general capacity. And as you know, the majority of our firefighters in Curry County are volunteers. So this could have a significant impact. And Chief, you can explain it probably much better than I can.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know how much knowledge you had prior, so I just, I crafted a letter.
Okay.
And thank you for allowing me to have this time. This is in regards to OSHA's proposed changes to Title 29 of the federal regulations. On February 5th, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, published a notice of proposed rulemaking to modernize the agency's fire brigade standard with a proposed new emergency response standard. This publication triggered the beginning of a public comment period that is scheduled to conclude on June 21st, 2024. While many of the provisions would be helpful and improve the safety of emergency responders, many of the new requirements would be very burdensome and in many cases impossible for volunteer fire and emergency service departments to comply with. If the standard is adopted in its current form, many departments would be forced to shut their doors or else operate outside the federal standard, leaving themselves open to fines, citations, and huge civil liability exposure. Now, we know our budget and what the future funding currently looks like for our agency. These unfunded rules will compromise our responsibility to our community's emergency needs by reducing and/or diverting our already overstretched resources, both human and financial, financial to lower level risks. Nothing in the proposed standard is in its final stage, so now is the time to take action. It's critical that members of the fire and emergency services submit a public comment explaining what should be changed in the proposed standard and why. Some of these things are mandatory vehicle replacements every 15 years. If we were to stagger that, we could not meet that challenge. We already buy used vehicles at high prices. Some of the other changes would be our turnouts, our personal protective equipment. To fully equip a firefighter in structural and wildland firefighting gear costs roughly $8,000 per, per member. And some of this stuff needs to be replaced as it's worn out, which could be annually, sometimes two or three times a year. All you have to do is tear a shirt or a piece of, a pair of pants. Annual physicals, fitness for duty evaluations, that would become mandatory. We don't, volunteer fire departments don't have that kind of money in their budget. I'm here just to respectfully ask the Curry County Board of Commissioners to bandwidth us, volunteer firefighters, and write a letter to the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, U.S. Department of Labor, 200 Constitution Avenue Northwest, Washington DC 20210, in support of our Curry County Fire and Emergency responders and respond negatively to these proposed changes to Title 29 Federal Regulations, 1910.115 and 156. I want to thank you for your time. Once again, my name is Mike Lancaster and I'm the fire chief for Winchuck Fire. I'm also the assistant chief for Harbor Fire and Rescue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So like I said, that was brought to my attention several months ago. And, and I anticipated that this would be coming. I wasn't sure what the timeline would look like, but we have, Revia, we were working on a, a response to that. That's in draft right now. So anyway, I would, I, I would like to support the letter of opposition as discussed.
Not going to get opposition from me on that.
No. In fact, I mentioned rural counties all over the state and the country would be.
It's actually what drives.
Yeah.
It's what drives fire protection, except for in metropolitan areas throughout the country. It's a, it's an incredibly complex and, and, you know, Mr. Lancaster is probably a good example. I believe I heard he's serving on two of those.
Right.
So if we don't have those kinds of volunteers doing this kind of work, then it won't get done.
Yeah.
No, not to mention that we're, we're constantly, especially in this community, facing the challenges of, you know, a lot of our volunteers are older, as is our population. So it's, it's a constant challenge to maintain those staffing levels and numbers and, and ensure that we, you know, have the staffing levels we need to provide public safety in terms of fire. And I don't need to say anything more about fire. We, that's a constant issue here. So if, if you are in agreeance with me, then we'll continue forward with the, the letter of opposition. We'll get that completed and submitted.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, do you want to formal motion?
I think it would be good.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the Chair work on drafting a letter of opposition for the OSHA, the new OSHA compliance rules in regards to firefighters and SAR.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
And yes, that motion passes three to zero. We'll get that done and we'll get that out, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the hiring of a fair manager. So we put that position out quite a while ago, actually, when our previous fair manager unexpectedly resigned, which put the upcoming fair and the, all of the responsibilities associated with maintaining the fair and the fairgrounds in jeopardy. So we put that out. And the one thing I want to say about this before anything else is this, this job is not funded from the general fund. So the, 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 the general fund cliff, financial cliff that we've been talking about, this, this position is not funded from that. It's TLT funds and funds that are generated from the fair itself or the fairgrounds itself. So we had 10 applicants for this position. And as you guys know, I'm also on the fair board as, as directed by this board. And so we, we had 10 applicants. Myself and another fair board member conducted some preliminary interviews with the applicants. We narrowed that down. And then on Tuesday night, we had a final interview with the final applicant, who is Teresa Hughes. She's from Port Orford. And the fair board conducted an interview with her. And at the conclusion of that interview, the fair board made a recommendation that, that we move forward with hiring her. I can tell you that Teresa's background, she has a lot of really good and innovative ideas that she has been implementing at a jubilee in Port Orford. Everything from marketing, from coordinating, and the jubilee that she puts together in Port Orford with the help of other folks is, has been very successful. Those, those traits that she has will be very beneficial here. She also has some other life experiences that will be very helpful to, to impact her position at the fair. So we'd like to move forward, the fair board would like to move forward with, with hiring her and getting her in that position as soon as possible. It's a little bit time sensitive because we have the fair starting on July 24th. And I'd like to do, I'd like to get this board's approval to hire her pending the background and drug screen.
What's your name?
Teresa Hughes.
I'll move to approve the hire of Teresa Hughes as the Fair and Event Center Manager, contingent on the receipt of pre-employment drug screen and background check.
Okay.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Can you give a little bit of discussion, please?
Sure, absolutely.
So just before we make this hire order, because it'll probably be, you know, this will be a great hire. But I want to acknowledge the fair board, Natasha, Ted, for, I mean, this last, I mean, it's been a couple of months since we've been in this process when we had a fair board manager just leave. And so that group of individuals did not let any part of fair operations fall. They continued to have the events that were scheduled. They continued to schedule future events. They continued to move forward. They continued to move forward in planning the fair on top of, on top of their, their current duties. So, I just want to, and also, Charles and our maintenance crew has been out there really working on that, on that facility to, to, to give Curry good facilities to go to for the fair, or, you know, at least start to work on improving some of the infrastructure, water and et cetera, out there. So, I want to just take the time to notice that as we, as we move into this hire, so.
And I just want to say also that maintenance through Charles and also the road department, everybody stepped up and, and Natasha did an awful lot of stuff and was working weekends all the time to get this done, on top of her other duties. So, just, it's, it's been great to see. That's, that's the kind of teamwork that, that we're looking for around here. And so, actually, I mean, I think all in all, it was a, it was a good thing to have that, have that change happen. And now the fair is starting to shape up and look like a place where we can be proud to have people come.
And that's been very dynamic in that we have an entirely new fair board. Everybody, everybody on the current board has been replaced. So, this is a new fair board. The fair manager, like I said, unexpectedly resigned, so that put us in a position. But I can tell you that the, the, the fair board, the fair board leadership, Ezekiel Harms is our fair board president, has been very aggressive in making sure that we are going to have a, a really nice fair on, again, July 24th through the 27th. There's a lot of moving pieces to that, and, and everybody's been putting a lot of effort to get that forward. Having this fair manager position will, will be very impactful to the success. And the, the, implementing some of the future plans, we got some pretty good news from Charles regarding fixing the arena and some of the other infrastructure issues that have been plaguing that fair, some of the costs with that, that we can cover through the TLT expenses. Anyway, I think it's, the future is very bright in, in that area, so. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that motion passes three to zero. So, next up in the agenda is regional solutions. Jay, that's you.
So, yeah, I got, I got noticed as well from AOC that we currently do not have a regional solutions committee member for our area. And the deadline to get the governor's appointment for that is the 24th of May, so I felt it would be appropriate to bring to this committee, or this commission to discuss
Yeah.
that appointment.
Well, like I said, I got that same email from AOC. I forwarded it to Rabia and Ted and recommended that you fill out the application as soon as possible. It is a.
We have a train coming.
It, it is related to economic development, so that is much more your area of expertise than mine, and, and I think you would be, I think you would add a lot more value than I could.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right.
Do, we don't need a motion to.
Just, I think just a consensus.
Just a consensus, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I will get it done.
All right. Then we will move on in the agenda to elected official, or no, Director of County Operations update.
Let's see, well, you've heard about some of the things that we're doing. I was going to mention the fair, but it sounds like we've already pretty much mentioned it. Let's see, we've been mainly have been, our office has been involved in moving the budget forward, working with, with Keena Wolf from Finance so that we can get a, get a handle on, on, get clear numbers for how, how we go into the next fiscal year. We're making a lot of progress there. Let's see, in the department heads meeting today, probably the most important thing I heard was from the IT department. I think that we have, we've got some new emerging threats that are out there, quite a few, and we've, we've, we, we are scheduling some testing of that with, by the outside agency down the road so that we can, so that we can stress test our system. Yeah. And, and all of that's, you know, this is, it's a, it's a quickly changing environment as far as the IT landscape goes that we have to have and, and, and to work through. We have, we have a lot of different demands on it, you know, we have, we're working with, working with law enforcement, we're working with, with GIS, we're working with a variety of different outside agencies, and we have to go through our firewall to communicate with those people. It's, it's a, it's a really dynamic operation that's going on there all the time. And I, I think of, at the department heads meeting, Phil was giving us a report, I think it went for like 45 minutes, and it wasn't even boring. There's a lot going on there. And I also think, I, I think that, that's, like when, when Lynn Coker was, was speaking and asking for a, for a report on that, I think that's a great idea. I think it's, there have, there's, there was an after-action report done by.
CISA.
CISA. So, that's by an outside agency. I would incorporate that, but as far as our report, it's still, we're really in, we're still in the recovery phase in a, in a big way. And so, I could, I could put together a report like that, but it will continue to change. But I think you're right that it's a valuable, it's a valuable set of information that we should get out to the public because it's, it's, as, also as I've, as I've come to understand as we've gone through this, through this, the levy interactions with the public, we communicated this as it was happening to the extent we could because we were completely blacked out. Our communications were non-functional. So, we did what we could, and then as we came out of it, it's still been difficult. And I don't, you know, it's hard to communicate to the public how much of a giant catastrophe and ongoing emergency that was happening here at the county from April 26th of last year through about August. It was all hands on deck and more, and, and it was, it was kind of like what you see when the, when there's a forest fire and the people are coming in from out of town. That happened in, in our two buildings for, and all, all of our buildings. We had, we had, we had volunteers from all over the state and, and from other parts of the country. We had these incredible people that came and helped us try to shore this up because it was a, it was an emergency of, of extreme proportions. And, I mean, I'll try to write it, but it might turn out to be like a novel, okay? Because it was, it's, it's actually, it's kind of hard to believe that we actually went through that. But I think it is a good idea.
Let me add a couple, let me add a couple facts to that. So, that, that attack happened, Lynn, as you remember, that, that was four months after I took office. Leading up to that, we had, I had been in discussion with Ted, Director of Operations, and Kuzkury Electric. We were in discussion then and regarding our contract with them. We had also applied for a cybersecurity grant prior to that, twice, and were denied that, just so you know. And then when the attack occurred on April 26th, we implemented all of our emergency management protocols. We immediately reached out to the state and our federal, local, and state law enforcement partners were involved. We actually had a total of 70 people respond to that cyber attack. 56 were from outside the county, and we received mutual aid from other counties as well. And it was, it was, as I spoke publicly about this, I describe it as the cyber Cascadia event of Oregon. It was that devastating. There was, there hasn't been a county that, or a municipality that has had that level of impact, complete devastation, other than us. And I've, I've spoken in several different public environments about that particular cyber attack. The CISA debrief or review of the incident, that is a public document. It's, I believe it's on CISA's page, but it is accessible, it's very detailed in terms of the response, the circumstances, et cetera, so that is available. And as far as the, the internal after-action report or, or debrief, I mean, ours would be very, we, we contributed the information which CISA produced, so it would be very comparable to that. I can also assure the public that the current IT system we have in place is, it has protected this county several times already. We have had attempted breaches, and the system we have in place stopped them. We have completely changed our policies, so they are current with the cybersecurity demands that we face. We have completely changed our practices and our protocols. We have an in-house Director of IT now, Phil Dixon, and he has done an amazing job in making sure that we're meeting the current standards that are necessary, constantly running tests and checks, and making sure that we are communicating as well with emergency management. Because emergency management and our IT director need to work hand-in-hand so that we can be prepared in the event that we have another attack. I can also tell you that our storage of data is safe, it is secure, it is off-site, and also following current standards that need to be in place to protect that data and information. So, worst-case scenario, we do get attacked again, we're in a completely different situation than we were before. But all of those things are expensive. They're very expensive. And, you know, that's one of those, that's one of those areas that, that is really the cost of doing business for a government or a municipality. There is no cutting corners there. We saw what happens when you do. So, so I do, I do just want to ensure the, or at least relate that to the public, that we are, we are current and our IT system is very strong.
Our, just to clarify a couple of matters, our, our data storage is redundant as well. So, it's, it's, at, at the time this happened, we had nothing. We had no backups. So, it's inexcusable and unconscionable. But we now have new, we have different redundancies, several of them. But also at the time of that, at the time of the, of the, of the attack, and, you know, we were, what we had was we had a ransomware attack, so, so all of our data was encrypted and it was held hostage. Now, now, I've heard from various people that, that, you know, some, some municipalities have paid ransom demands, and in some cases, they've recovered their data. In, in our case, we didn't, as you know, we, we don't have the financial wherewithal to be doing that. When, when, when the, when the attack happened, it was so devastating that when, with the encryption of our data and, and the effect that it had on our hardware, we actually ended up having to replace a vast amount of our hardware as well because it was, it was past useful life, a variety of different things happened. It was just incredible what happened. But, but we also, every county in Oregon has IT, has insurance for this type of IT intrusion event. We had the minimum allowable because, and, and we, you know, we had the minimum, the minimum allowable, and, and we couldn't get more because our system was, had not been kept up to date and, and, and the new requirements had not been met. So, in, in reality, to, to, to have even contemplated paying that, that ransom, our insurance company said, you should pay the ransom. And I was like, well, we would if we had insurance, but we didn't. So, it wasn't an option, and we worked our way through that, and we've now got a better system, a great system in fact, and, and it's going to be expensive, and it's going, and in order to run this county at any level, we need to have that system. If we're going to be doing law enforcement, we're going to be doing all the other services that we do, taxation, assessment, everything. We need to have a system that, that is stood up and can withstand these attacks from outside. So, anyway, that was a little bit more than my normal report. The only other thing I was going to say was, the only other thing that I can mention is that we have been continuing to work on Social Security Bar. The county surveyor is down there locating the corners so that we can know where the high watermarks are and, and what area the county is responsible for, for administering, and, and which parts are the responsibilities of the private landowners adjacent. So, we're working on that, and we should have some, some updates on that pretty soon.
Good.
All right, next on the agenda, elected official updates. I don't see any elected officials here, so we'll move on to commissioner updates. Commissioner Herzog.
I'll tell you, gentlemen, I'm just praying my heart out that these levy passes. That's just, you know, I'm the eternal optimist, so that's, that's, well, next Tuesday is on my calendar, and I, as I know it is with everybody on this bench, so. That's all I have, sir. Just, it's going to pass, and we're going to move forward, and be good.
Commissioner Trost.
No, I don't have any updates.
All right. I have a couple. So, the first thing I want to do is remind the public that on the 22nd, that's the day after the election, at 10:00 a.m. in this room, we have a budget meeting. And we don't get a lot of people that come to the, to our budget meetings, but I would encourage people to come to the budget meeting. And of course, we will have some answers on the levy, and we will be discussing in the Budget Committee what are, how we're going to, how we're going to proceed forward. So, that is a very important date for this county. This weekend at the fair is a wine festival. There's food trucks, there's different vendors. Natasha's been working really hard on it. It sounds like it's going to be a really good event. So, I just wanted to remind the public that that event is this weekend. I've seen some advertisements for it. Looks like a, looks like it might be well-attended, it might be worthwhile if, if the public's interested. And then another date to make the two of you aware of is on the 29th in the afternoon, I have a meeting with emergency management, state emergency management, and we're going to be going over some grant opportunities and options related to funding of the towers, et cetera. So, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward. That's another critical infrastructure issue. And, and GT, you guys know GT from state emergency management. Man, he has, he has been just extremely helpful to this county, especially to me, in just helping us navigate a lot of the, the funding issues and the, the issues that come with these towers that are very complicated, very complex. And that, I'm hoping to get some resolution there on the 29th. And then, of course, there have been some public comments that I've seen on social media about whether or not we're going to have a fair. We are having a fair. It's going to be a great fair. It's the July 24th through the 27th. There's all kinds of events, and, and we're definitely having a fair. So, hope to see people there. That's all I have.
All right.
If nobody has anything else, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming.